All right. Good evening. It is Tuesday, November 19th, 6:00 PM. I call this meeting on North Brookfield Board of Selectment to order. If you'll all join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First order of business is approval of minutes. And I believe that you both were at all of those meetings. So I'll entertain a motion to approve.
You weren't at one.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think you were at one.
Right, but they were.
Yeah, yeah.
So it doesn't matter.
Okay.
So, approval minutes for September 10th, 17th, 24th, and October 1st.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve payroll warrant number 11 for $366,975.83. School warrant number 1033 for $63,044.7. CDBG NB 21, number 1034 for $152,361.45. General warrant number 1035 for $250,272.62. And waste water treatment plant upgrade 1036 for $541,524.23.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. No spending requests? All right, excellent. I like it when there's no spending requests. All business, no all business, new business. We have a resignation. Patrick Gustafson has decided to resign from capital improvement. So I'll entertain a motion to accept Patrick Gustafson's resignation.
Sumo.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Just thank you, Patrick, for your time on the committee.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
And then it just says on the note that Tara wants to, I think it's Tara, yeah, post his seat and two alternates. I don't know if we need to vote on that, but that was the note in there.
I don't think we need to vote on that.
Yeah, okay.
So there will be, those seats are available if anybody's interested. Please come in and fill out the appropriate forms and we'll appoint somebody. All right. Brooke, would you read the budget letter?
Sure.
It's just a calendar, right?
It's, yeah, is that what that is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, the fiscal year 2026 budgeting calendar. From August to October, we certify free cash used in coming, in the coming fiscal year revenue projections. And that's the town accountant, Department of Revenue. September to October, we begin the budgeting process for the coming year. Establish next fiscal year's budget guidelines. Develop and distribute budget guidelines and forms. And that's the select board, town administrator, finance committee, and department heads and school committee. Set the tax rate for communities with semi-annual billed it, semi-annual billing, excuse me. And that's the assessors, select board, and town administrator. In November, we submit budget requests to department heads and school department. And that's select board and town administrator. November sets the tax rate for communities with quarterly billing. New growth in tax levy calculated. And the assessors and select board do that. November is also when we begin capital planning process. That's the select board, department heads, and finance committee, and CIP committee. December, prepare initial revenue and expenditure projections for the coming year. That's the select board, town administrator, accountant, and finance committee. In January, we release House One, first indication of state aid for the coming fiscal year. And the governor sets that. Submit the initial fiscal year '26 operating budget requests, including written explanations of line items to the town accountant by a certain date, which has yet to be decided. And that's all town operating departments. In February, submit the initial fiscal year '26 operating budget requests, including written explanations of line items to the accountant, town accountant by a certain date. And that is school committee, water department, sewer department. And begin preparation of budget recommendations, meet with department heads. And that is the town administrator and finance committee. In March, if legislature passes a local aid resolution, cherry sheets will be issued. We prepare the final revenue and expenditure projection for the coming fiscal year in preparation for town meeting. And that's the state legislature, Department of Revenue, select board, and finance committee. In April and May, prepare town meeting warrant recommendations for town meetings. That's the finance committee. In June, make any reserve fund transfers necessary to complete fiscal year, finance committee. Transfer funds within and between department budgets. And that's the select board and finance committee.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 2026 budgeting calendar.
Sumo.
Second.
Any discussion? No, looks good to me.
Clear plan, and I like having a clear plan.
Yep.
So that looks good.
spells it out very good.
Yep.
Mike or Ashley, did you have anything on that?
Yeah.
Well, we're a little bit behind at the beginning, but we're catching up.
Great.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Did you have an opportunity to look at the resumes for the highway superintendent?
No, I'm sorry. I did not.
Okay. All right, so, um, are you comfortable if we were to vote on a new superintendent tonight?
I would be comfortable with that. I would go with, you know, whatever, because you both did the interviews and I'm comfortable with whatever you choose. I wasn't here for that, so.
All right. Vaughn?
Yep. Good to vote.
All right, well, if you want to make a motion, and then we'll discuss it.
Sure. I would like to make a motion to appoint Randy Morgan as our new permanent superintendent of the highway department.
All right, I'll second that. Discussion?
I think Randy's been doing a fantastic job running things down there in the meantime, since we haven't had a superintendent. He's been there for quite a while now. He knows the ins and outs. He knows everybody that works there. And he's really been getting a lot of projects rolling, and I'm happy to see that. And I know a lot of people in town are too.
All right. Did you have anything to add?
No, I mean, I'll agree with that for sure. I've been really impressed, Randy, and it's been great having you in that position.
All right, well, I, um, the, um, the other candidate did submit a really good resume. However, as noted, Randy stepped in and he went in with, um, well, quite a lot of enthusiasm. And he's actually gotten a lot of compliments from people around town. And he's done, he's been on the ball with just about everything. So I see no reason to not give him a chance to be the permanent highway super. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Randy, if you accept that, you're the new highway super.
I do. I thank the board for the opportunity.
All right.
Congratulations.
Yes, welcome.
Does he have to get sworn in?
I think we're gonna have to discuss salary.
Yeah, they'll have to get sworn in. There'll be some stuff to do, but, yeah.
All right. Excellent. Nancy Waldron, is she not coming there?
She was supposed to be here, but I can briefly go over if you don't want to hold it up.
Well, you don't look like Nancy, but go ahead.
Uh, well, for Parks and Recreation, uh...
Is that her, maybe?
It's probably Sheila from the tax...
Oh, Sheila, okay.
Uh, Parks and Recreation, um, we're thinking about the Thanksgiving 5K, but unfortunately, we didn't really have a lot of time to get off the ground, so that's been canceled for this year. But we're, are looking forward to attempting a first, first night in North Brookfield. And we just started reaching out to local businesses and community groups to try to get them on board and involved. And in the December 31st, pretty much in the afternoon, early evening, so it's not a late night thing or anything. Focusing on activities downtown, family-oriented activities. And we will have more details when we get to see who we can get involved. And certainly look for involvement from the community. Anybody on the board or anybody who wants to jump in and make suggestions to have some sort of activity and help out. So I think that's what I have for now.
Great.
Awesome.
Thank you, guys.
Did you have anything to add?
I can't, TV's fantastic.
That's nice. All right.
So you think of doing something on the common? Is that what you said? Just like an event on the common, or just?
Downtown and, and perhaps on the common, depending on what we can get together.
Cool.
Awesome.
So this is a CMRPC town, and town agreement for fiscal year '24 CDBG admin services. And this is something that we do every year, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Anytime we get our CDBG meeting, yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve and sign this agreement between North Brookfield and Central Mass Regional Planning for fiscal year 2024, Community Development Fund Program Administration Services.
Sumo.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And then, we got time.
Let's see.
Vaughn, you want to read the, um, special town meeting warrant?
Should I read the one that has the three articles or the, the potential fourth one?
No, go with the four.
Okay.
Four, yeah, I was gonna say, oh, four and a half.
This is for a special town meeting on December 4th. It's going to be held at the Senior Center, 6:00 PM. Says, "In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town all five to vote in elections and town affairs to meet at the North Brookfield Senior Center in said North Brookfield on Wednesday, the fourth day of December, 2024, at 6:00 PM to act upon the following articles, namely, Article One, to see if the town will vote to rescind a portion of the vote of the November 15th, 2024 special town meeting. Article One, that raised and appropriated $66,564. And to group health or take any action there relative thereto. Article Two, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $7,180 from fire assistant chief salary to fire supplies or take any action relative thereto. Article Three, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $7,000 from police career incentive to police overtime or take any action relative thereto. Article Four is to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $100,000 from stabilization to capital stabilization or take any action thereto."
So what is the reason for possibly not doing the fourth one?
So, capital improvement planning did request this to be put on the warrant, but the board is the ones that approved the warrant. So I made two, because there's an argument that, that should wait until May, when we see what the budget looks like for Network 26. And if there's funds available, we can move it then.
Okay.
They do have about a hundred thousand in their stabilization account as it stands now, so it's up to you guys.
All right.
Vote on that, or wait until?
Well, I'll entertain a motion for one of these, uh, two warrants, and then we'll discuss it. So if one of you would like to make a motion for the three or the four articles.
I'll make a motion for the warrant with three articles, so we can wait until May when we have a better idea.
Just make the motion, then we'll talk about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so you made the motion.
Second.
All right, now discussion.
I figure we can wait till May when we have a better idea of the finances at that time of the year. Like Ashley said, they already have a hundred thousand. They don't quite yet have a plan for an additional hundred thousand.
I guess my only question is, how do they make a plan if they don't know whether they're gonna have the money or not? And I would just, do we have anybody from capital, or any?
We don't have a plan because...
We don't have money?
We've had no submittals and no requests.
Okay.
So, the thinking is trying to get ahead of it.
Yeah.
Here it is, money there, when money is asked for.
Okay, so this is...
As opposed to emergency reaction.
Right.
Need a piece of equipment.
So I guess that's my question is, so, is the capital planning committee working on creating a schedule of like when we're gonna need some of these things, and so then we can kind of forecast?
This week, tomorrow's meeting is, uh, we're hoping to review and approve the operating procedure and policy, which includes the town bylaw, which gives a guideline as to the schedule. We are a little behind, um, as far as that schedule, but I think there's consensus that we can kind of catch up. And that'll be kind of turned in for you guys to review. But the thinking is, is that, you know, having, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when.
Mm-hmm.
And that, you know, the way things are going now, I mean, clearly, money is in tight supply. And you have to be in a position where, you know, there is some ability to be proactive as opposed to reactionary. Which is never good for anybody.
How much is in the stabilization account?
A hundred.
Hundred and five.
How much is currently in?
Capital stabilization.
In, in the stabil...
The stabilization.
These stabilizers.
I think we're at like, a million twelve dollars or something like that? Just about out of mill, just, can't see it over, so we put that money back.
After we put in the three hundred thousand.
Yeah, it's somewhere around a million. I know it's just over a million.
Okay.
Million two hundred thousand. Yes.
All right.
And again, as the, uh, the budgeting process indicates, that we will be going out to each department head to provide us with what they anticipate their capital needs will be for fiscal year, uh, 2026.
I would just wonder if we might need that hundred thousand dollars if we have to balance the budget in '26 with it. That's just why I would be more in favor of waiting. That's, that's the only reason I would see for waiting, if we need that hundred thousand dollars at the end of the year.
Does it have to be a hundred? Can it be fifty?
Can be.
Any number that you can choose.
Well, I mean, you know, I understand Vaughn's point, and I agree with his point. But if we don't have, if we don't start putting money aside for our capital stuff, it's just gonna snowball downwards, right?
Yeah.
So, Brandon?
Yeah, well, uh, I mean, it's going to be in one stabilization account or the other.
Yeah.
It's a little more flexible when it's capital stabilization. And the thinking was, with over a million dollars in stabilization, around a million two, a hundred thousand isn't that much taken away from it, because basically, the thinking has been to keep it, try to keep a million dollars in the stabilization.
Right, to maintain our ability to get a loan and...
Right.
We're gonna, we're gonna pause this discussion and come back to it, because we're five minutes late for our tax classification hearing. Okay, so, Sheila, you're up.
Up, up. There's that one, two years thing that we do. Copies, everyone. And these are our figures when it comes to, um, what the values are for the different residential, commercial...
Thank you.
You're welcome. Industrial. So as you can see, the largest class that we have is eighty-seven percent, and that's the residential. And traditionally, we have asked the selectmen to vote on either having a split tax rate or a single tax rate. And, uh, and so it's up to you guys.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the usual single tax rate.
Sumo.
Second.
All right, discussion?
I'm curious how it would affect our, the way our taxes are now to do a split rate. Okay, that's why I'm asking.
The commercial and the industrial would be quite high. I mean, obviously, if you look at Worcester's tax rate, I think Sturridge for a while did a split tax rate. I don't think they do it anymore. But probably Lemonster does, Springfield, but they have a lot of commercial industrial property to, to support that.
Right, and we don't.
We don't have that.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have that. So therefore, it seems, you know, to keep our commercial and industrial people here, we, we do one tax rate and spread it out.
Got it, thank you. I just was curious.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I just want you guys to, I can share it first, just at the bottom here. I just, I'd like to keep it on file. That'd be great. Thank you. You're welcome. Yeah. We're gonna set our tax rate, hopefully send everything in, in the next week or so. And, um, oh, you guys can sign too.
Oh, you need all of us, okay.
Yeah, I'll agree to sign. Uh, and then we should have it for the next time you're on TV, and we'll give you the information. You can announce it then.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, that's usually what we do.
Thank you.
Thank you, just in case. I'm done.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor for the special town meeting warrant with three articles. If, um, well, I guess we've talked about it. All in favor?
Just doing the three articles?
Yeah.
Aye.
No.
Hmm, no. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the special town meeting warrant with four articles, but amending it to thirty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Discussion?
Lot different of a number than a hundred thousand.
Yeah, I, my preference would be to go with the fifty that you suggested. I feel like that's a nice kind of in-between number for now. It helps support the capital planning moving forward. If we don't start putting money in there, then we're, we're not gonna do it. And so I'd like it to at least, from my perspective anyway, I'd like to at least start putting money into...
Think fifty might be a good compromise.
Okay, all in favor?
Do we need to re-move?
Yeah, we would, yes.
Okay, so then no?
Nay.
All right, no. All right, go ahead, Brooke, make the motion.
I will make a motion to approve the special town meeting warrants, all four, with a fifty thousand dollar...
Amendment.
Amendment on the fourth one.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
I think that's all I have to say.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
We can sign this and we just motion for the fifty thousand? Or I can print a new warrant, but you guys need to sign it, like, it needs to be...
Yeah, sign it, because you could put the numbers in.
I can change the numbers, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I need this to be signed.
We'll just make the motion what it is. That's all that matters.
Okay.
The motion what matters. All right. Do you got anything else?
No.
Anything else, Vaughn?
I have nothing tonight.
Public comment, period. Excellent.
No, I just, I just wanted to say, uh...
He was first, Randy.
Who?
Go ahead, Brandon. Brandon, go.
So I'd say, uh, the Parks and Recreation Committee applied for a grant. Unfortunately, we did not receive it. I don't know, everybody knows how hard, difficult grants can be to, to get. You know, we're a little disappointed we didn't get it, but we'll keep trying. This would be for up to fifty thousand dollars that we could have used to start on improvements on the basketball court, for the basketball courts. And, uh, but, we'll try again.
So the plan that you have, do you know what that will cost ultimately, like, the total amount?
Well, based on the estimates we got for the, the grant we applied for, it's probably gonna be somewhere between a hundred and seventy-five and two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
That's just a rough, you know, estimate from what can't be other.
Okay. Excellent. All right, well, thank you for trying.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yep. Randy?
Just wanted to let you guys know that I did get the, the three bids for the trees on the water department property.
Okay.
Oh, good.
Tried to print them out, but our printer ran out.
Okay.
I can tell you the numbers, and where they were if you want.
Um...
I have it on my phone.
Well, if you got them to Mike, then we'll just look at them.
I have them already.
Yeah.
I just didn't know if what you wanted to move forward with it or wait till next week.
What is the status on that? I, sorry, I've been away, so I...
Well, we should probably move on it.
Yeah, we need to move.
The, uh...
It's been too long.
Jepson did not trim the trees that are closest and overhang, the ones we were actually most concerned about.
Yes.
They left them there, and it's on us to remove them. And they're not, they said it wasn't a logging operation. Those need to be, uh, what, what, how did he describe those? That was a tree removal.
Tree service.
Residential.
Yeah.
Residential.
And, uh, as a result, we've gotta get someone in. Now, we've got the four thousand they gave us, but, uh, we would need additional funds. And the low bid was seventeen, I believe.
Yeah.
So we would need an additional thirteen.
Okay, actually, that came in lower than I expected. I was worried about...
You have the thirteen trees there.
I have fourteen thousand left in my ARPA.
We can't really use that four thousand, because it has to go into the general fund, and then it will come back next year. It's not like we have a problem with our trees, so...
Right. Well, we've got something to start with. He's got fourteen in ARPA left.
I mean, we can just make, we can take it from somewhere and dedicate it back into...
Well, what, what else is left in the rest of the ARPA money?
I thought it was about nine thousand less I knew.
Yeah, I think that's about right. I can talk to Ethan about it.
Do you know how much is in there? Is it nine?
I'm not sure. I know that ARPA committee met a couple weeks ago. I don't know if they...
And I know they're releasing some funds that aren't gonna be used.
I think we had an update on that recently. I can take a peek.
And Randy, you guys were gonna help a little bit with the tree removal, right?
Yep.
Oh, good, thank you.
That's why he was able to keep his costs down. Because your ARPA tour are considerably higher.
I've also contacted, uh, Jepson, but they have not responded to my phone call about doing cleanup that was required in the contract.
It was in the contract.
Yes, it was.
All right, well, do whatever you need to do to, for recourse.
Um, the most recent email from Ashley on September 18th was about nine thousand dollars in ARPA. So I don't know if there's been any changes since September 18th, but...
Okay, well...
I know they've met, met since then.
They've met since then, yes, there could be, but...
All right, well... All right, well, I want to entertain a motion to approve, um, Jim Rust, that's who it was, right?
Yeah.
Jim, Jim Rust to clear the trees out that are necessary along the property line between, um, Hillside Ave and the water department property. Um, and, and further move that that money comes from available ARPA funds, whether it's from highway or otherwise.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Nope.
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. What else? Public comment, period. Going once, going twice. All right. I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.